Good evening and welcome to a special city council meeting of Thursday, November 29, 2018 where we're going to interview an interim city manager candidate, Mr. Richard Haberman. There are -- Mr. Haberman's resumes are in the back of the room. Mr. Haberman said it was okay for us to release them to the public, as well as note cards if anybody has any questions that they can put their questions on the note cards and pass them up here and we'll address them for you. So this meeting is now called to order. I would -- we'd all rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Welly.
Here.
Councilman Ayers. Councilmember Milan.
Here.
Councilmember Moffett.
Here.
Councilmember Albert.
Here.
Mr. Haberman, if you'd like to introduce yourself to the audience, that would be helpful and we'll go from there.
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Rich Haberman. I am a retired city manager, though the last six months I served as the interim city manager for Adrian, Michigan. And as -- prior to that, 18 months on the road in an RV. And prior to that, I spent six years as a city manager at Frazier, Michigan. Prior to that, nearly four years as city manager at Claussen. And then prior to that, I was in Connecticut, Maine, and Arkansas. I got into this business in 1992 and retired at the end of 20 -- wait, so what is this, 18? So it would have been 16, or just the beginning of 2017, so.
Okay, well, thank you. Is it to open the floor to the council members for questions?
I just have an immediate question about how long was your assignment at Adrian?
Six months.
Six months?
Yeah, it was an interim assignment. It was supposed to go three months. It took a little longer.
I'll ask the question everyone wants to know. You were here in Claussen for nearly four years. You left. The reason we were given was personal reasons. Was it an amicable personal reason? Was it amicable with the city when you left? I have not spoken to anyone, so I'm just curious what your take on that would be. Not divulging anything personal, of course, because we know that's--
I'd rather not discuss it, but it was -- we were able to reach a settlement. How's that?
Okay, so are you willing to come? Clearly, you'd be willing to come back because you're sitting here today. So is that because the faces up here have changed, or is it because something about you has changed that would make Claussen more agreeable? Because clearly Claussen has not changed.
Well, it's an -- first of all, it's an interim assignment.
I understand that.
So it's an assignment limited by time. Secondly, I'm familiar with the community.
I understand that.
And knowing what interim managers are called upon for, what we're required to do, and the difference between being an interim manager and a full-time city manager, the assignment is well within my capability. And being familiar, I think I'd be a good fit. And I live just a hop, skip, and a jump away, so it was a good -- it was a good fit. And the timing's good in my retirement. My significant other, she just finished a second knee surgery. She's going to be laid up for about three and a half months. And so we'll go on the road after this assignment. So it just fits in many ways.
Let me ask it this way. So I've had the experience of leaving an employer, being gone for several years, and then going back to an employer. And it's a weird experience because when you leave an employer, you're like, "I'm going to miss you, but gosh, I'm glad I don't ever have to speak to you again." And so tell me about how you would -- those people that you went, "Gosh, I'm glad I don't have to speak to you again." Now, when I went back to the place that I'm actually currently employed, I had to reconcile the old issues I had with those people and find a new way to move forward. Talk to us about the people that you went, "I'm glad I don't have to talk to them anymore," and how you're going to reconcile that past and be able to be productive and an asset as an interim role.
I'm sorry, I don't work that way. You know, I mean, I'm a professional city manager.
Well, I'm a professional benefits manager, but I'm a human, so--
No, 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 no. I understand what you're saying. But, you know, when we go into -- when you go into an assignment, no matter where it is, and you're accepted into a community, the average term for a city manager, when I first started, was three to five years. So there's an expectation that there's going to be an end someday. And sometimes it is under -- in many cases, you can see the signs that you're moving towards it. Other times, you don't. But you accept it as part of the profession. And you don't take it personal. It's not personal. I do not believe, in any place that I've been where I have separated, it has been a personal experience where I was released because of personality. It was a professional difference. In many cases, especially with newly-elected council members, the -- I can tell you, the term I've heard more times than any is, "Rich, we want to move in a different direction." And no, and I'm just simply saying, it's part of the profession. You don't -- I don't have those issues as far as personality and stuff like that.
So you missed my question.
Okay.
You're speaking on a macro level. I'm talking on a micro level, the day-to-day. As you're doing your job, you know, you can't love everybody in your job. And when you leave a job, there's, you know, relationships that weren't necessarily favorable, and there's ones that were great. And coming back, having done it myself, coming back to a place that you left, you have to have a fresh start. And talk to me about how you'll have a fresh start with some of those people that you may be, you know, clashed with in the past or whatever, because that's part of how people do day-to-day jobs, speaking on a very granular level. Tell me how you would approach that as the interim manager.
I'm clearly not understanding because I think differently, I guess. I'm not--
So you're telling me you got along wonderfully with everybody and you're going to--
No, of course not.
Okay.
Of course not. But we were able to make things work. You know, I can remember the former mayor here. Her and I would have discussions periodically. And we'd reach a point where we realized we were not going to agree. And we just simply would state, "I think it's time for us to agree to disagree." And we moved on. You know, I'm able to work with people I disagree with. Because I want to tell you something. One thing I encourage in my staff, one thing I encourage in members of the council, is I want to be questioned. I know several times in interviews in the past, I was asked, "What is your biggest fear?" My biggest fear is going six months presenting things to a council and having nothing but, in this case, 5-0 votes and no questions. Because I'm good at what I do, but I'm not that good. I need to be questioned. I don't have problems with people disagreeing with me because it gives us a chance to work through, process it through. And if there are things that need to be adjusted, then we'll adjust it before it becomes a major problem. So I mean, that's all part of a process. It's all part of what I'm used to doing. It's a public entity.
All right, I'm going to ask maybe a different question, maybe the same end result. I'm sure, as you've been a manager through the years, that you've grown and learned new ways to do things. And looking back in your past, to think of a decision that didn't go as you would have liked, and you would have do it differently today, can you give an example of one of those type items?
I don't know why I'm drawing a blank, because I know darn well there were some things that happened that didn't go quite as we expected them to do. Most cases, we were able to adjust as we moved along, so maybe that's why I'm not thinking about it in that way. I don't remember anything that I've done that turned out to be a, excuse me, quote-unquote disaster. But I'm sure there were many things that we started down one path and we would have to adjust our course as we moved along. You know, this is a -- well, anyway, that's about the best I can do, because I can't think of anything specifically that I would say I regretted having done. Maybe the process, like I said, may have had to been adjusted, but I think we got to where we needed to go. It may have just been taken a little longer than I anticipated.
So have there been any things in your management style that have changed through the course of doing it?
Oh, yes.
For example?
Oh, yes. I used to be an absolutist. I used to believe I knew everything and I was a -- and I was, you know, it would -- everything, I had a good control. And then I started recognizing, as I got more mature in the business, is that just about the time you think you're in control, that's when you find out you're not. Because we're in a people business. And when you're in a people business, you have people internally and people externally. You have no control over them. All you have control over is yourself. And so you learn to work within those boundaries. And you just accept that, because that's part of the working environment.
So when you left the city of Claussen, what was your biggest regret professionally of something that you couldn't accomplish here in that timeframe?
Actually, it is kind of funny because there were several things that were, call it loose ends, or whatever you want to say. They actually got accomplished over time. They just happened later after I had left. There were things that we had started. The one I can think of is the mid-block crossings that you all got. We started that, I think, about a year before I left, working with SimCog. And it continued on, and others were able to bring that project to fruition. And I think that's what's important. And I'll tell you, you know, this is something I have found, I think the anecdote that best summarizes that is something that happened in Old Orchard Beach, Maine. I was -- when I was hired, one of the things they wanted to do is they wanted to start their own sanitation service. That meant buying equipment and starting an entire sanitation department. And I sat down with staff and we worked up a plan, presented it to the council, the council adopted, and we started to enact. Well, an election came along, and a petition was presented to the next council, and they undid the entire program and went and maintained status quo. It was ironic because after I had left, the -- one of the people who had presented the petition later on had come on the council, and they reconsidered and actually implemented the program five years later. Sometimes, when you present something in this business, you find that you're too early. And that's things you've just learned to recognize. If it's a good idea, it will come around. It just may be that when you presented it, nobody was ready for it. And yet, it sets out there. If it's a good idea, it'll happen. So I can't say I regret it because I think virtually everything was completed. It just wasn't completed during my tenure. So there's a certain satisfaction you take in that.
You've had a long, long career. And you've told us a couple of stories about things that, you know, you wanted to do, they came to fruition, or you ended up being right. Tell us a story about a time where you just ended up being completely wrong.
Trying to think of one that -- yeah, finance director turned out to be a disaster.
Tell me about that.
Well, we ended up, when the finance director left, and I inherited the finance director and all, you know, but still, I thought we could make it work. And I didn't recognize the signs that were going on. It took nine months of -- we had to bring in Plant Moran. And it took nine months and about $60,000 or $70,000 to clean up the books and take care of that. And that was a case where I -- my oversight was a little too relaxed, and I've corrected that. But still, it was an experience I wouldn't want to relive.
If we were to bring you on as our interim city manager, how do you -- how involved -- what's your perspective as an interim city manager as opposed to a full-fledged hire, you know, tenured, long-term city manager? Do you treat it as a different obligation?
No.
So what would you -- what would your focus be with Claussen, knowing what you know about it today? What are the top items that you feel you would need to focus on for our city?
Well, that would have to come from you, the direction. You know, when I went to Adrian, okay, they had a strategic plan that was laid out. I sat down with the commission members. I had an idea of what they wanted from their new city manager. And so I felt my job was to set the stage. And so I went through, I did a financial analysis, presented them with financial options and different things going forward. One of the things, you know, most of the commission members were surprised by is the fact that I just assumed the position as if it were a full-time job, recognizing that there were limits. And one of the -- two of the limits that occurred is I had two department heads that left. And so I made interim appointments, leaving the fact that the new city manager, or new city administrator in this case, would probably want to make those hires permanent on his own. I didn't want to saddle him with somebody like my finance director I got saddled with. But, you know, the -- but, you know, you recognize that you don't want to put -- you don't want to put something that would create a problem for your successor. And so I see it as setting the stage, so to speak, so that there's a seamless transition, and the person can literally get on the feet, you know, get on the ground running and not have to go and pick up the pieces. I left a complete report, files, everything my successor needed when we sat down and met. And he has a -- it's going to be pretty easy for him to get going, up to speed very quickly.
Did you spend any time in Adrian once they'd hired their new city manager? Was there a transition period, one, two weeks, or they hired him and then you left that front?
Yeah, he -- well, we weren't able to coordinate that crossover. He's starting on the 17th. He had to relocate and everything. But we have sat down several times, and he knows I'm available, both by email and by phone. But he's got -- he's been going through all the reports, and we have communicated the last two weeks I was there.
Can I go back to my last question for a moment? Don't be annoyed because I have questions today. I appreciate that you stated that you would take your directors from the council. That's a great, that's an excellent answer to make people happy. But we all know that the city manager don't look like that. It's okay. It wasn't an insult. The city manager, we need a strong city manager who can not only agree with city council when appropriate, but will also stand up for the city, right, that will manage the city. Because ideally, we set legislative issues, and we're not, we hopefully don't have to micromanage anyone--
Oh, no.
-- or anything.
No, then you misunderstood my answer.
No, you just started off with, you know, you've -- I don't know what your exact words were, but basically you said you will set the -- you said we will set the tone, right?
No, policy direction. I need to -- you know, here's the thing, is that, you know, I would anticipate, and maybe this is, you know, I know that, like I said, in Adrian, they completed a strategic plan process. They had a strategic plan laid out. That's a policy. That's something that comes from the council.
Yeah, I understand.
And I work within that. My job, this is really, really a very simple business when you summarize it. You all tell me where you want to be in five years, and my job is to go and give you a way to get there, get from here to there. And I get that. I do understand. No, I have problems if I get -- if you're mucking around in administrative matters, then you're clearly outside your span of issue. And we would have issues. And I would, we would be having some discussions about that. I'm very, you know, I'm very concerned about multiple lines of communication. One of the most frustrating things you can do as a city manager is to find that you've got five different members of council who are getting information from five different people on staff, and you're trying to make something out of that confusion. And it is confusion.
So let's talk about communication. How, what's your standard turnaround for a response from, let's say you have a citizen complaint. How would you handle that? That's -- how would you handle, if it comes into you, "I'm complaining because, whatever, my neighbor, blah, blah, blah." What's your, what would you do? What's your cause of action? Because although there are loose policies here, and this is not criticism to anyone, we have loose policies here. And one of my frustrations in the past year is hearing from people who feel like they're not being responded to in a timely manner. And I think that starts at the top, and that's one of the key things we want to look at--
Oh, absolutely.
-- is communication, not just internally and not just us. Because, you know, if we're not the most important ones here, you know, people here are the most important ones here. Our residents and our businesses should take priority for all things here. And I personally want a leader that thinks that way, and that works with all groups together to achieve that.
I totally concur. I agree. My, you know, nothing frustrates me more than to have a citizen come in and tell me that they talked to one of my staff people on an issue and or tried, or left three phone messages and never got a phone back. I'm sorry, we're not that busy that we cannot return a phone call and just simply find out what the issue is and try to deal with it. We're not going to be able to make everybody happy, but we should be able to talk to them. I've had many a citizen come into my office, and the only guarantee I can give you is you'll understand why we do things. I can't guarantee you'll be happy about it, but we will sit down and talk about it. And I'll try to work through this. And I've generally been able to amicably settle those things. But I concur. I mean, you're right. I mean, we're in a people business. Otherwise, they have no need for us. We're here to -- they pay the taxes, they pay the bill, and they have a right to expect something in return for that. No, that's -- customer service is real high on my -- has always been high on my priority list.
Thanks.
And if I led you to believe otherwise, then my apologies.
No, I didn't take it otherwise.
Can you specifically walk through, okay, Paula's on the phone. She's saying, "My neighbor Sue is cooking hamburgers, and I'm a vegetarian, and she shouldn't be cooking hamburgers over there." What could you do about it?
I hate neighbor v. neighbor.
But talk to me about your process going through that.
That, I'll tell you what, that is the most frustrating kind of problem to deal with, is a neighbor v. neighbor, because they want us to go and sit there and be the referee. In fact, one of my most infamous neighbor v. neighbors, and Mr. Kings, maybe recall this, happened here in Claussen. And it was, and I remember the judge sitting before the two neighbors and said, "You will wear a placard and march back and forth in front of your house, saying, 'Love thy neighbor.'" That's how bad it had gotten. How long was it? A year, John, that we dealt with it?
I know.
So, yeah, it's, those are, you cannot solve those problems, unfortunately. You know, the best you can do is try to keep it, keep the drone down. But we're not referees. We can't solve when a neighbor doesn't like a neighbor, and one neighbor decides they're going to blast the other. If they're violating the ordinances, we can do that. But it's, you know, it can be very, very frustrating dealing with those kinds of situations.
So how do you approach it, though? Paula's on the phone. Sue's cooking hamburgers. Talk to me about what you'd say. I want to understand how you would approach it.
Well, the first thing I would probably tell you is that I'm not sure there's an ordinance violation here. And so I'm not sure what I can do. Perhaps you need to -- perhaps you need to tell your neighbor that you find this offensive and ask them if they could move the grill to another part of the yard. But if it isn't a violation of ordinance, there's limits as to what we can do.
Would you seriously not ask what time the burgers would be done and then go over and go?
Not just ask if beer's being served.
There you go.
Just keep it friendly.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I have about a dozen questions, but--
Expect nothing less.
But you've, we've touched on some of them already. You said a couple of things already that pique my interest at the very least. You used the term, quote, "I did a financial analysis." And can you expound on that? Did you personally perform the financial analysis?
Yes, I do those.
Okay.
I had, when I went in, you all, I'm not sure if you were on the council in 2010. But 2010 is a watershed moment for city managers. When I went into Frazier, I was told by the council that I had inherited a balanced budget, and that we knew we had some very difficult issues because assessed values and, you know, taxable values were going down drastically. And four months later, after I went through all the assessment, I went back to the council and said, "No, you don't have a balanced budget. Your budget's got a $489,000 deficit. And let me show you what is going on here." And we walked through the budget. And I did a financial assessment and went through the finances then and projected forward for the next five years. And it was interesting, because I think it was three years later, a mayor was still using that report because those numbers were spot-on. But we were able to get a handle on that. And I did the same thing in Adrian. They had different circumstances. But, you know, I think it's important for a council to know what your financial options are. For example, are you familiar with PA 33?
That probably is.
Public Act 33. It's a special assessment for public safety, public safety mileage. It's applicable for communities with populations less than 15,000. That was a tool that we were, that has been used in Frazier. That was a tool we couldn't use in Adrian because they have a population of 21,000. But these are the kinds of things that you go through and you learn what tools are available. An advantage, for example, on a PA 33 is that if you're tapped out, in other words, you've reached your headly cap, what you can do is you can do a PA 33 to cover your public safety costs, including equipment. And you can go ahead and reduce your general operating mileage, which puts you, gives you a little bit of a cushion going in that direction. But these are all different types of tools. And that's, when I say a financial analysis, I'm talking about looking at the current situation, moving forward, what are your options, what opportunities, and what are your limits? Because I think if you have attended any of the MML conferences, and you've, and I'm not sure if Mark may have mentioned to you, but the current formula for municipalities is you're doomed to fail. There is no way you can sit down and have your assessed, your taxable value go up, you know, 2/10 of a percent, 1%, 1 and 1/2 percent, have your cost of living and cost of goods and services going up 3%, 3 and 1/2 percent, and think that you've got a long-term future there, because you don't. And that's the reality. And so the question is, isn't whether you're going to have a problem. The question is, when are you going to have a problem? And what do you do between now and then to either extend that issue until the legislature can do what it needs to do, or try to work your way through it? And in Adrian, for example, their best example would be go to an income tax. For them, that is, it's a county seat. 45% of their properties are tax-exempt, which means 55% of their people are paying the bill for the other 45%. And an income tax balances that out, and that provides them with some opportunities there. So that's what I'm talking about, that kind of thing.
So do you enlist the help of others in that, or is it just you and a spreadsheet? And what, I mean, what tools do you use, then?
I have a guess.
I look at audits. I look at financial, I look at budgets. I pick a five year -- in Adrian, I picked a five-year swing. I went from 2010 to 2015, and I looked at the bottom line, compared audit with audit, budget with budget, looking at trends, looking at, you know, looking at the audit reports and seeing how the things work out and everything. I did that because I had no choice. When I ran, when my situation arose with my finance director, I had to go and hire a new finance director, and I ended up having to do a lot of that. So I learned it. I, don't get me wrong, I've always done my own budget. It's just that I've depended, I've used my finance directors to get me a lot of the detail. And I kind of looked at it as a strategic, from a strategic as opposed to, you know, your, as opposed to your tactical, using a military term. And so I used my, let my finance directors do the tactical part, and I focused on the strategic. As I started realizing I had problems with my finance director, and I had to get a new one in, I had to dip into that role as well. And it was, and it's just been part of the demand on the system. I mean, 2010 was a year where, you know, councils were, I mean, that council, we were looking at, what are we going to do? How are we going to get our way through it? And what they expect is they expect your city manager to do that, to do that assessment. So I would be talking to auditors and different people like that. I've been through a couple of those types of reports, so I don't have to necessarily depend on other people, you know, unless the data is not there. And then I'll, I'm not afraid to call the auditor and say, "Hey, look, what was happening? You know, what's your assessment on this?" and that type of thing. And I've got other resources. I've got friends and people that, in this business, so I've got resources I can draw on for that.
So how many years have you worked with a finance director, and how many years have you worked without a finance director?
Probably half and half.
Okay.
My first job, I walked in and sat down, and I got hired on the 15th of January. And there were a stack of papers, about as thick as John's book of laws here. And I asked the, what was she, I can't remember what her title was, but anyway, she was the bookkeeper. And I asked her, "What are these?" And she said, "Oh, those are the budget requests." And I said, "Okay, when's the budget due?" She says, "It has to be adopted by state statute February 1st." So that was how I learned how to do budgets. It was a-- It was a crash and burn, you know, you had two and a half weeks not only write it but to get it passed. And so I've been doing that from day one.
As you know, our former city manager served as our finance director, he didn't have a finance director supporting him. Do you, how do you approach that as an interim city manager? Do you, um, are you going to appoint an interim finance director? How would you do that here in Colson? What's your solution for that?
Actually, I think, uh, in the short term, uh, there's a firm I worked with, uh, it's a contract firm, former, they're former finance directors and, uh, and I would probably do a, have a, work and try to perhaps have them come in periodically just to make sure we keep the books rolling and everything and roll that forward to the new, uh, new city manager rather than try to go through the entire recruitment process, trying to find, finance directors are not easy to find. And if you're going to do a search on a finance director, you want to plan on the ultimate result being hiring a new finance director. I think that would be unfair for me to go and saddle, uh, my successor with a, with a finance director. I've found out how that can blow up in your face, but I do know some firms that could fill in and do that on an interim basis. Their, Plant Moran does it, there are several other firms that'll do that. And what I'd, the only assessment I'd have to do is determine, uh, and I, I could talk to Stacy and get an idea of how frequently we would need that service and how many hours and that type of thing, just to make sure that the books stay in order, uh, moving forward. And of course, it's going to be budget time, so I'm going to, I'm going to assume you're going to want me to start working on a budget because even if I'm here till March, that puts you right smack in the middle of your budget process, so, uh, I'm assuming that'll be part of the process as well. So I'll not only be doing an assessment for that, but also trying to determine what the budgetary needs may be.
So, um, you said you've worked with a firm before. What costs do you expect to incur? And I, I know you said that you'll talk with city staff here to determine kind of the frequency of that. In addition to your own interim city manager salary, what costs would we expect to incur with that firm? Any projection?
No, I, I, I'm sorry, that would be, first of all, I, I'm, you're asking me to remember what the rates were five years ago or four years ago. Uh, and, uh, you know, I, I can't recall for a fact. Uh, I think the worst case I ran into, uh, I think was with Plant Moran, and we had them on site, uh, virtually every day for, or several times a day for a period of about six months. And I think it ran somewhere around $60,000, $65,000. But, uh, that was far more than what we needed to do for maintenance, maintenance of records.
Somebody else?
Thinking about the entire body of your skills and experience and in a manner that would add up to 100%, what percentage would you say your skills and experience as a manager, thinking of administrative processes, problem solving and people interactions is, and how much of it is finance?
I would say finance probably is, um, probably a good 40%. It's a means to an end. Uh, you know, it, you know, it's, it's like when you do the budget, the very first thing I do when I sit down to do a budget is I spend, I'll spend three, four weeks just working on the revenues. And the reason I start with revenues is I don't care what the expenses are. If you don't have the money, you can't do anything. And so that's what it really gets down to, is you can lay all the greatest plans in the world, but if you don't have the financial plan to accomplish it, then you've just, you have another plan that sets up and gathers dust and never gets implemented. So I'd say good 40% finance. Problem solving is, uh, probably the one I have the most fun with. I love problem solving.
So that goes into my next question. So imagine, uh, G comes out of a bottle and says, "Mr. Haberman, you get your dream interim city manager assignment. Tell me, in that dream assignment, of course, dream council, dream environment, tell me what your focus would be in that job and what you would spend the majority of your time doing."
Actually, I think I just had that assignment. Uh, Adrian turned out, Adrian turned out probably to be one of the high points of my career. Uh, it was a fantastic opportunity. I had a relatively young, uh, commission. Uh, I think, uh, one member had been on four years, but most of them had been on less than three, two, three years. Uh, had a young, uh, had a staff, I had 127 employees, uh, and a lot of things going on. And, uh, and the very, very first thing I did was focused on assessments. We, I did, uh, first assessment I did was on the, was on the finances to get an idea of where we were and lay that out. The second assessment I did was on the infrastructure. Uh, they had a water plant and a sewer plant. Both plants had been recently rehabbed and in fact, I had a good wastewater, uh, report, about yea-thick, and went through it. Uh, we had pipe in the ground, uh, that went back to 1870. And, uh, and it was, uh, it was a fascinating study going through about 63 miles of pipe, uh, trying to get through the different timeframe, timeframes, starting at 1870, trying to get an, to assess that. That had, they'd spent $1.1 million, so the wastewater was not too difficult. It was just a matter of going through the report and trying to distill it so that the policymakers, the commission, would have an idea of what the challenges were with respect to the wastewater system. Water system was a little more challenging because, uh, there were no real good current studies. And that's the difficulty you've got when you're dealing with the grant process. We can get all kinds of grants for sewer, we get all kinds of grants for wastewater, stormwater, all that other stuff, but there's nothing out there for water. So as a result, your water systems often go, those types of studies, because they run one, $1.1 million, uh, you have a tendency to hold off on those. And that was one of the recommendations, recommendations I made is they needed to do a water study because, uh, they had a lot of pipe in the ground, the same thing. You don't have sewer line that's in, laid in 1870 unless you've got water line that's probably somewhere around the same time.
What was the nature of their, their need in Adrian? Why was there an opening? What, what circumstances caused there to be?
Change of direction.
Okay, so the...
My predecessor was, was, was released.
Okay.
Which, by the way, I know one of the things they asked me after I'd been, several of the commissioners had asked me how, how I could so quickly get up to speed. I was, uh, up to speed and working and making recommendations and everything within a few weeks. And I told them that not once did I ever go into a city in which my predecessor had left voluntarily. So there are some unique things that go on in those situations, especially at a staff level and at a council level and in, within the community. So there's some, some things that go, there's baggage out there that you have to deal with and you, and I'm used to that.
I want to ask, what do you feel that your responsibility is to this, to a council on a, on a, on a day-to-day basis? And what is this council's responsibility to make you a successful city manager during this time?
Um, as far as day-to-day goes, about the only thing responsibility I feel there is, first of all, there's going to have to be an assumption that I'm following the guidelines and the, uh, trying to accomplish the goals and different things that you all want, uh, things that I can find in the record or that you'll discuss. But one of the, I will, the one thing I have to do is I have to make sure I keep you all informed. I don't, I don't want you to read about something in the newspaper, I want you to know about it first from me. I have two rules I operate under. Number one, the council is always right. People always chuckle about that, but in the end, when you guys sit down and vote, that's it. You're right. Whether I like it or not, you're right, because that's the vote. And then I just take my marching orders and move on. The second rule, which I think is probably the most important, is I never inform one that I don't inform them all. Nothing will create division more within a council when you have one or two council members who have secret information and they spring it on you in a council meeting and the rest are sitting there, "Where did that come from?" That won't happen. I inform all equally. You'll see, uh, when you get an email from me, it's, you'll see that it's, uh, mayor and counselors, mayor and counselors, mayor and counselors, and all five of you get it at the same time. If I'm talking to one of you and during the course of a conversation, something comes along and I think on that and I think, you know, probably wouldn't be a bad idea, I always, I, my default is always to inform rather than not. If there's a doubt in my mind, it's better to inform them all.
Thank you. So I've heard...
Oh, the other part, I'm sorry. The other part, again, getting back to the council's responsibility and everything, is that, uh, you know, if you come in, Mayor, and you tell me you want something done, I'm going to have an issue unless I know that you represent the council, because each of you are individuals. You represent yourself and your position. It's when you sit down here and you take a vote, that's when I know what the policy is. And until that vote's been taken, I'm going to be reluctant to take instruction. Now, I mean, I'm not talking about citizen complaints and those types of things, but I'm talking about the kind of thing that, you know, I don't like the way they're out there, DPW's out there cleaning, you know, fixing that street. You all need to change how you're doing that. Hmm, maybe not. I'll explain why we're doing it the way we are doing it, but, uh, you know, I, uh, each of you are individuals and I know, uh, I've had mayors in the past, and I'm not, please, Mayor, don't take this, uh, as a personal, but mayors who take the position like they're above the rest of the members of the council. It is, it, you are in charge when you're in a meeting, but outside the meeting, as far as I understand it by statute, you have the same authority, powers and duties, except in an emergency. Except in an emergency. You only, you're only one that can call the governor and say, "We need a declaration of emergency," but otherwise, uh, same powers and duties all across the board.
Thank you. So we've heard you talk a lot about your skills with finance and infrastructure and sort of hard skills. Tell me a story about, um, a human, uh, internal, within the city offices you were working, a human, um, problem or, or situation that you resolved or worked through, whether it was between departments or between, between staff or...
Sure. Had a, um, every, every office seems to have that, that employee who gets shuffled from one department to the other, never seems to work out. Uh, and they start building a reputation. And, uh, and I inherited such an employee. I will not say where, but I inherited such an employee. And we went through the typical process, you know, you, absenteeism, showing up to work late, and you start down that boring route, the route you have to follow, and you start the disciplinary process. And ultimately, you end up, there's a grievance filed and you're sitting there with the union. And you're talking to the employee and you're trying to figure out what's going on. And we went, we, we were having a conversation and I left that conversation and it hit me. She's bored. Every job they've given her, she's been bored. They give her the worst job in every department and she's bored. And that's her problem. Who wants to come to work and be bored all day? Nobody wants to do that. So, we started finding duties that weren't getting done and assigned them to her. Never had an issue after that. So that, yes, you know, I, I, I am very reluctant to, uh, to have, call any employee a, a lost cause unless, I've tried everything and just recognize that there's just nothing can be done. And so, uh, but I like, I like trying to solve, that's a problem that I thought was a very, it was kind of a neat solution. And I've, I've used that in, tried to use that in other situations, similar situations, and, uh, not always to success. In this particular case, that's what it was, but it isn't always. Sometimes there are other issues that you have to deal with.
Can I, can I, I just wanted to remind the audience that there's index cards in the back and pens, if there's any questions that you want to be addressed to Mr. Haberman, to please, um, share those so that we can include your questions to him. Thank you.
Can you tell me what the nature of the grievance was? What, that, that...
No, it's personnel matter, I can't talk about it.
I'm not asking for the specifics, but I guess...
Oh, the grievance was the discipline, against the discipline.
Okay.
Yeah, in other words, it was a suspension, they, they were grieving the suspension. I'm sorry.
So to piggyback on examples, um, human things, how, how do you respond to a conflict? Maybe you can give us an example, between two or more employees?
You're saying a conflict between...
A conflict between two employees, yeah. How do you handle that?
Well, the first thing I need to do is I need to talk to the department head and see if they can, uh, give me some insight as to what the issues are. Uh, usually, those are the kinds of things that most of the department heads can take care of. Uh, they work day-to-day with the employees and if there's a conflict, uh, it, it, it depends on whether it's, you're talking about, you know, just a spontaneous conflict versus now we, we've got issues where they just cannot seem to work together. Then we, then that'll come to me and then we're going to have to figure out, you know, if there are other options. But, you know, ultimately, uh, you know, sometimes you can shift them into different divisions, different, you know, and keep them, so to speak, separate, on separate assignments and things like that. That's not ideal. It depends on the quality of the employees. If they're both good quality employees, except they can't work together, well, we'll see if we can work around that.
So do you, do you encourage employees to come to you with, um, with issues that they might have? Or are you more of a chain-of-command kind of guy? What, what's your outlook on that?
I have an open-door policy. Anyone can walk in the door. Uh, if that door's open, they can walk in if they have questions. If they have issues that I think are better taken up with their department head, that's what I will do, is I'll suggest they go to their department head. Uh, or if it's something that I think the, I, I've had situations come up where, uh, where employees brought me an issue and as I've dug into it, I found that, uh, it's a, it's one of those kinds of, uh, problems that it may be a conflict between what we're trying to do and what the union, uh, you know, what the contract, the labor, labor contract says. And sometimes the, uh, it, we need to adjust that. I'll have an employee file a grievance, it'll be a friendly grievance, where we'll sit down with the union and try to see if we can come up with a way to resolve the issue, the, the conflict between the contract and what we're trying to get done. Uh, and periodically, we'll do that. We'll just file through the grievance process. The reason you do the grievance process is because now you have a written document and typically those great grievances, once you've got it written, are then amended into the next labor negotiation, late in the labor contract when it's renewed.
What if the issue is among, among the administrative staff, um, the department heads? And there are issues in conflicts and people cooperating to maintain, you know, they piggyback on each other and they need things, they have to cooperate in order to accomplish some tasks. So if we have a problem with leaders who are unwilling to work with the other person, how would you adjust that?
Hmm.
That's a real problem.
I know it is.
Yes, it is.
Sounds to me like...
I mean, not here, there are no problems here.
No, it sounds very familiar. I'm almost afraid to tell you, I can probably give you the names. Uh, that's, huh.
I just feel those...
We'll get it worked out.
Those are the things that slow down an operation.
I know, I know they do.
You know, top-down affects everybody.
No, that's where, that's where sometimes you just, uh, you know, it, that's where you become the dictator and you just say, "This is the way it's going to be done, period." And that's it, and we just move on.
Okay.
You, you know, sometimes you have to be the adult, because not everyone can play in the sandbox. And somebody has to turn out to be the adult and deal with it. So I get that, I understand that.
And you have no problem, um, you seem like a very strong person, you seem like you probably don't take a lot of gruff from people and you probably defend yourself quite well verbally. So if, um, I, if someone is a little bit antagonistic towards you, are you able to let it run off your back and then move on?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, no, I, I, that's, that was when I said earlier, you know, some of the things that have happened over the years, I've, I'm, I'm, I'm less, I take offense a lot less than I used to. Uh, you know, it's just, I, I, I learned a long time ago that, um, if somebody's going to talk about you behind your, behind your back, then my only comment to them is, "Please, talk to my face." I'd rather hear it upfront and we can deal with it. Because if you're talking behind my back, I can't do anything about that because I don't even know what you're talking about.
You spoke a little bit about your expectations for council and what our expectations would be for you, even though they're yet, yet defined.
Mm-hmm.
What are your expectations for your department heads?
Do their job.
Okay.
Run their departments. You know, I'm going to, I'm going to tell you something in this, uh, and I'm sorry, sir, I...
Victoria?
I, I'm...
Matt?
Mr. Albrecht?
Matt?
Counselor. My apologies, but, you know, you, you talk about, I think you were the one that brought up about the micromanaging and those types of things. I think the same thing holds for me. You know, I, I was a reserve cop out in California. That means that, under California Penal Code, I was a police officer limited by time, which means I had all the authority of a full-time policeman, limited by time. When I was on duty, I was a cop. When I wasn't, I was not. I would no sooner pretend that I can run the police department based on a couple of years of experience like that, but I know what questions to ask. As a volunteer firefighter, so I understand a little bit about firefighting. I've worked on a lot of public works projects over the years. But again, my department heads are there to run their departments. I expect them to run their departments. And I have enough background and experience to know what questions to ask. So I know whether I'm getting that kind of performance out of them.
Tell me what you do as a manager to make the workplace be a pleasant place that people are willing to come to every day.
Well, it starts with an open door and walk, coming in with a smile and greeting everyone. And, and I, I run a very casual office. You know, my, you can come in, see me. I, I'm on a first-name basis with people. You know, when we, when, you know, you're right. I'm, I'm, I can be a strong manager, but I don't believe in being a dictator. I run a fairly easy-going workplace. I allow people latitude, because what I want to encourage amongst the employees is creativity. I want them to feel that they have, they have a right to fail, to try something and fail, as long as they learn something from the experience. I had a chief of police very early in my career called me on a Saturday morning, and he said that one of the officers had gotten involved in a crash. And I asked him if anyone was hurt, and he said, "No." I said, "Nobody was killed or hurt?" And he says, "No." And he says, "But we do have some, you know, the vehicle was damaged pretty bad." And I said, "Well, chief," I said, "we can fix cars. We can't fix people." And so I, you know, we can, employees should feel the freedom to try something, and if it fails, as long as they learn something through the experience, you know, "Why did you do that? That seems like a crazy thing to do in my world, but why would you do that?" And walk them through their thought process with the expectation that you're teaching them how to problem-solve. And so the next time they come out or are confronted with ambiguity, their decision process, making process is perhaps a little better because they haven't, and they're not afraid to try to make a decision, 'cause you don't want a bunch of timid people. I don't need my department heads walking in my office and saying, "Rich, you know, we're having a problem with this pipe. Can you, you, you..." No, no, you fix it. You got an engineer out there. Ask them.
I'm a big believer in the idea that leaders take responsibility, but they give credit. Can you kind of give some examples of that in your management and kind of how you approach that style?
I agree.
Or do you disagree with me?
No, I don't disagree with you at all. You know, I mean, you know, the fact is, is that, you know, it's very easy sometimes to fall into the trap of, "I, I, 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 I usually try to talk to the council. It's we, 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 we." You know, I may be the city manager, but we, I, and things may get accomplished. I may be, you know, at the forefront sometimes and everything else, but it didn't get accomplished by me. It got accomplished by we, the staff, the employees, the people, the council. But if you don't mind, a former city manager from Claussen, boy, cook, cooking him, he was, he was your village manager in 1927. By the way, he lost his job in 1929 with the crash, 'cause he was doing a major project on 14 Mile Road. And of course, the stock market crashed, and they had no money. So he got released. Well, he went onto fame as a city manager, and he is, has this list of guideposts. And one of the guideposts, he says, is, he says, "Always give your council credit. They have to be elected. You don't." So that answers the other half of it.
Yeah, my, my primary concern is that, is that employees who support you get the credit for what they do.
Absolutely.
We have touched on this in the beginning, but talk to me about how different, how you, how differently you approach the job today than you did when you worked here before.
Well, when I got here the first time, Lisa Dwyer was the mayor. And, and the objective of the council at that time was to improve the downtown. If I recall, the vacancy rate was, and I'm probably, I'm not gonna be precise on that, but it was like 85% vacant. You only had a few buildings that were full. And they were working on a new downtown plan. They had a DDA. And moving along and everything like that. And the goal there was we needed to build the downtown. We needed to make it happen. I wanna say that that was probably the most exciting four years of my career. We start out, I was hired in January formally, but I was brought in in December to start working on a bond issue. You all may recall the street bond issue that was adopted. And that was one that we put together, and we were able to get, I think it was $22 million, if I recall. We were able to leverage that money against federal funds and fix 14 Mile and Main Street. Then we also did the narrowing. That's when we did the on-street parking. And we did, things went crazy. It was just a crazy time. Now, so it'd be totally different coming in, because the downtown has matured a little bit. It's not to say that, in other words, the issues are different than they were then. At that time, you're trying to attract and, and build a viable downtown. Now you have a viable downtown. And so it's a matter of trying to maintain, assess, you know, what, is there any weaknesses in the system? Do we need to peak some things? But it's, it's a different situation than you had back then.
So that's how the city's different. How are you different? And how do you approach things differently?
Oh, oh. Well, probably not as excitable as I used to be. That doesn't mean I'm not energetic or, I get excited. It's just that I have, I think I've, my demeanor's a little calmer than it used to be. And I'm not quite as, in the certainty that I had individually, I double-check with others, especially with my staff people. I have a tendency now to try to second-guess myself before we put together a package and bring it to the council, so we don't have to make those corrections later in the process. Hopefully, we try to get it all debugged ahead of time.
After an interim, after your next interim position, whether it's with Claussen or another, do you, do you plan to continue serving in an interim manner? How long do you, do you plan on doing something like that?
Actually, actually, it was, it's, it's just a matter of opportunity. This is really a matter of circumstance in my life. The fact is, we, we got back after 18 months on the road. We were kind of tired and wanted to rest, and it, summer was coming on. We had the pool, we wanted to open up, and different things along those lines. And so we knew we were gonna take some downtime, and I got a call. And we thought about it, and it seemed like an opportunity, three days a week. So I spend half the time here, half the time down there. And so we were able to, so it, it fit within our lifestyle expectations. We were planning on actually taking off in January, but the knee issue came up, and with the surgery and everything else, it's extending that timeframe, and this opportunity came up, and it seems to fit within that timeframe. But as far as interim assignments, I'm not looking for them. I, you know, it's a matter of whether I'm called. The opportunity seems viable, and it fits within my lifestyle. I'm retired. I am retired. I don't wanna be a city manager. I don't mind being an interim and serving in, you know, within a, a city manager limited by time, like a reserve cop in California, limited by time. I don't mind doing it, 'cause I do enjoy the business, but I don't wanna do it full-time anymore. I just don't have that kind of energy.
So if you were to come in, and you served three months, let's say, what would you like your legacy to be when you leave here? What would you like to accomplish? And for us to say we made a wise choice, and for the citizens to say that was a good transition, what, what would that look like to you?
That would be that you're, that my successor is very successful, starts out with success, and, and there's, and there's no, it's a seamless transition.
Well, what is it? What are the specifics to that? So I've not served as a city manager, so I am assuming when you come in, you want, you know, your people to be in place. You want nothing ugly hanging over you as far as fights or, you know, legal issues or, I don't know. You know, there's a thousand things, and you've done it. So give me, what exactly would you like, like, what does that mean? What does it actually mean to say it would be seamless, and he would be successful? Like, what are you setting up for him? What's the process for you to set that up?
So finish this sentence. During my interim manager, in the future, during my term, my position as interim manager, I accomplished-
I think we'd be really challenging for you to work with.
That's, that's, that's a very, that's a, that, that is a, let me, let me, let me put it this way. In Adrian, okay? I think I've talked about some of the reports I put together in terms of setting, working with their strategic goals. Well, they had also decided that they were going to enter into the medical marijuana business. And so we were gonna do licensing for medical marijuana. A new city attorney came on, and her and I were reviewing the ordinance. And I looked at her, and I said, "This isn't gonna work." She looked at it and said, "No, this isn't gonna work." We went back to the commission, said, "This ordinance is not going to work. We're gonna have to revise it significantly." And we eliminated 2/3 of the ordinance, stripped it down to what we needed to do what needed to be done. In other words, what are the municipal obligations? 'Cause they were trying to duplicate everything that Lara's doing, the state. We didn't need to have any of that in our ordinance. We just needed to focus on what our obligations are, what is our requirements. And so we started that process, and we've set up the entire review process with staff, the whole bit. When I left, there were three denials and a suspension that were being heard by the city commission, which commission upheld us, so we were able to accomplish that. That would be the kind of thing I'm talking about. Each thing thrown at us is completed, to the best of our ability. And if it's not completed, it's handed off in such a manner that the, that my successor can pick up the ball and bring it to completion. So that means, so, so I say, that means virtually everything that you run into. You know, it's, there's just a lot of different challenges that come up.
So how do you do that? How do you leave a good trail for the next person? Is it just strong documentation?
Absolutely. Yes, absolutely. I mean, when I, when I left, when I said I left my files for my successor, I have files that go back to 1999. I showed him how they're searchable and everything else. I gave him everything I had, going back to 99, to fill in the blanks in case he needed to know what, what resources and what I'm referring to and everything along those lines. I also did a report for him, a summary report of, you know, what I would say, better titled loose ends, things that had not been completed. The interim assignment, in other words, I, I, this person's an interim, this one's an interim. Here are my observations to date, but it's gonna be your decision in the end as to what you, what you need to do, and all the different things along those lines. But yeah, well documented, and, and of course, being available.
Within that same vein, we have a question from the audience. Will you aid the city council to find your replacement? And if so, how would you, would you be a part of that?
You are, are you contracting with Gov HR?
That has not been determined at this time.
Well, then I, that's gonna be a difficult, you know, if you contract with Gov HR, they will provide all those resources. I, I'm available. I mean, with Adrian, I sat in on all the interviews and, and everything along those lines. But they, they winnowed the list down to, I think, 10, and then eventually down to five after meeting with the commission. I sat in on all the interviews and observed and tried not to interfere in the process. If I was asked questions, I, I answered them. And as it turned out, the meeting, one meeting I did miss was when they did the final selection. And I did tell them that was the person I thought was gonna be the best one for the city. But I try not to, the difficulty, see, this is a balancing act, you know? I mean, I've been in this business a long time. But, you know, the bottom line is, that person doesn't have to make me happy. They have to make you happy, 'cause that's, you're the ones that that individual's gonna be working for, whether it be a he or a she. And so what my opinion is, I've gotta be very careful on, I can answer your questions and things like that, but I'm probably gonna stay away from an opinion type of thing, because it doesn't make any difference if they make me happy. 'Cause if they don't make you happy, then we got, you got a problem from the very beginning. So it's a delicate, it's, it's kind of delicate getting involved in that process.
From what you know of Claussen, what do you expect your term of temporary here in the city? What do, what do you think is a realistic?
I am hoping to be out by mid-March, at the latest.
What if we were needing, what if we were to need you longer than mid-March by, at the latest?
That could be a problem. That could be a problem. Yeah, I mean, I'm just simply saying, that could be a problem. I have another party I have to answer to there, and I'm, and I'm afraid that, my, I've been given my marching orders on that, with that RV is headed down to Florida at the end of March, so.
That's when it gets hot there.
Oh, no, we're gonna be heading along the Gulf Coast and work our way west, but still.
Mr. Albrecht, did you have an additional question?
I think I have one more. How do you stay informed as a city manager on issues legislative from a state, a federal level? What, what resources do you find yourself referencing?
Well, the first thing I do is I, I definitely look at all the local papers online. And I focus on local, because I wanna know what's happening in communities around here, communities close in, in the greater Detroit metro area. And then I, and I, and I'm part of the MME listserv. That's our Michigan Municipal Executives Listserv. There'll be issues that'll be posted there on virtually a daily basis and communicate with that. I am also on, Municipal League sends me briefings. I get briefings from, from the police, through the, on the police issues, different personnel issues dealing with police. 'Cause that's, that's another issue that you've gotta really be aware of, is personnel, personnel law, and, and trying to be on top of all of the different changes in law and different court decisions that come down. So I try to stay current with those, so we don't find ourselves stumbling into a court, a court date by accident. If you're gonna go to court, you wanna make sure it's deliberate.
I'm, just, you brought up a, you reminded me of a question. So how is it that you work with the legal team within a city? Who's a-
My, my, I had a city attorney recent-
As you say, who's right?
No, 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 no. I will say this. I might, I had a city attorney that I worked with for about six years, and he once told me that, he said, I, I would make a better city attorney than he would a city manager. But one, one of the things that he would frequently do is he would just send me the court case or the statute or whatever, and then we would have a discussion going from that. My first state I worked in was Arkansas. They operated under what's called Dillon's Rule. Dillon's Rule has been adopted. Michigan Supreme Court has also reiterated is that municipalities exist at the will of the state. You are not in the Constitution, and you exist at the will of the state. And if the state chooses to abolish you, you're abolished. You have no legal standing outside that which the state gives you. And so in Arkansas, they followed Dillon's Rule very, very strongly. And so every two years, the Municipal League there would publish a book. It was a five-by-eight, and usually about three inches thick, and it was called Handbook for Municipal Officials, and all it was was statutes. So you learn, I learned very early in my career, my city attorney would tell me when I said, "Hey, I'd like to do this," he'd say, "What's your government, you know, you know, what's your, what statutes? You know, where's your authorization?" And I'd tell him what statutes. And then he would, he would either verify that those were correct or, and most often, what he would bring to the table would be the most recent court decisions. See, I have, I can get the resources. I can get the statutes. I can go on the state website. I can go to the legislative website. I can read the statutes, PA 33 of 1933 or whatever, you know? And I can read these statutes and everything. But what I don't have a resource is what the city attorney has, and that's the most recent court decisions they can make. They have that database, and so you can blend the two and then, and try to make it work. So there, you know, I work, I work within my limits. I'm not the lawyer.
Thank you.
I try to be, though, at times, right, John?
Every city manager does.
Exactly. But, you know, it, it really is good for your city manager to be able to, to do these types of things, because otherwise, you're gonna put a lot of effort into something only to find out you have no authorization to do it in the first place. So why did you waste your time doing it? So the first thing you wanna find out is, "Can I do this?"
Okay, thank you. Additional questions? Would we like to? We do number five?
I, Madam Mayor, I would like to, I, I move to amend the agenda to have public discussion open at this time.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Milan?
Councilmember Milan?
Yes.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Willie?
Yes. I'd like to open the floor to public discussion, please. Come to the microphone and state your name and address. And if you have any questions for Mr. Haberman, you could do it. So, at this time, if you, another opportunity to do that. Please come up.
Lana Anderson, 115 Park Drive. When you, I, I'm a little bit bothered by some of your sayings that you said where you want to be out of here by the end of March because you have marching orders from your wife or whatever to head down to Florida. I mean, to me, if you, why are you wanting to be our interim if you're not willing to be flexible in the time? Because if we can't find a city manager by then, I feel like you're just filling in the roles because it's, this is what, this is a good time for you. I have six weeks or whatever. So, yeah, I think I'll do that. And when you're really retired and you said you didn't have the energy for it to be full-time, then how do you expect to have the energy to just do an interim? Because by March 30th, you're out of here, whether we have somebody or not. I have a problem with that.
I think you're misunderstanding some things. I, I just finished a six-month assignment in Adrian, 87-mile commute to live down there and came back. So, I had the energy to do the job. That's not the point. When I was called and asked, I asked how long the assignment was and I was told three months. And so, I made plans based on that.
Okay. All right, I just, it just bothers me.
None, just, you know, here's the thing.
I'm using the words you used.
No, and that's fair. I wanted to make sure that, that the council and I are very clear on, you know, what, you know, what, what we're doing. I mean, I, you know, I'm not going to go and say that, I want to say this, that's what I would like, what we plan on doing, you know? And if, and if we can't work within those, if we run into issues, well, we'll have to cross that. But, you know, the bottom line is that typically you can get somebody on board three to four months. And I'm, so I figured that that should be well within the timeframe. But if there's concern about that, then perhaps I may not be the right fit here. And I get that, I understand that.
Anyone else? Okay. Public discussion is now closed.
Mr. Haberman, Adrian took six months as a city manager. Can you tell us why?
Part of it, I think, was that the commission went through a very lengthy process in terms of, they didn't, they started late, they wait, I think it was, I had been there six weeks before they even advertised the position, six, seven weeks before they even advertised the position. And then, they went through semifinalists and finalists. They went through a two-stage process. So, it elongated the process and they had several interviews. But that, you know, you're looking at a situation there where it's a much bigger city, a lot different challenges. Plus, this would be, for them, their first appointment of a city administrator from outside. I, in fact, as an interim, I was their first outsider they'd seen in 20 years.
Did they use a service or did they do it on their own?
Yeah, they used, no, they used Gov. HR. And they, they were able to get 57 candidates. And out of the 57, they culled that list down to, I think it was 27 or 28 that were qualified. And then they went through and winnowed it down. We're talking about, I think, the finalists, they had gone through, I think, two or 300 Google searches and referenced, in-depth reference checks, the whole bit. So, they, they brought a lot of resources to bear in terms of on the winnowing down the candidates and everything along those lines. But it was, I think it was primarily because they started the process much later than they anticipated. Because I went in with a three-month expectation and, and they were only, I think, four or five weeks into it and they had to renew my contract.
Why do you think they waited so long?
I think they were comfortable with the way things were going at that time and they wanted to see things settle down because it was, it was, there was some rough edges there. The, my predecessor was very popular, had worked in the city for a number of years. And it was a very difficult situation for both the commission and for the employees. And I think they wanted to see if we could get everything kind of settled out so that when the new person came in, things were moving smoothly and they would not have to deal with that.
But it is your firm belief that this council should be able to find a city manager by the end of March, four months?
I think you should, yes. You know, you're dealing with, I'm going to tell you something, if I may, that sounded a little bit, I didn't mean that to sound quite the way it sounded, but Adrian is a different animal. You're talking about, yes, a very good-sized city, fantastic downtown, lots of assets, lots of history, financially solid, good-sized staff, but they're 39 miles on a two-lane road from Toledo. They're about the same distance on a two-lane road from Ann Arbor, from Celine. In other words, there's no interstate nearby. So, and, and that two-lane road is a country road. You're going through little farm communities and things like that. So, they're fairly isolated. So, to take a position in there is an absolute relocation. You have no choice. You're going to have to buy a home. You're going to have to look at relocating your family and everything like that. Whole different kind of demand system than you have here, being in an urban area. I mean, I'm in Frazier and it's 25 minutes down the road. You have, you know, you have a whole different population that you can draw from. When I first came to Clausen, I lived in an apartment. Bought a house after I'd been here for a year and a half. When I went to Frazier, I lived in the house here in Clausen because I bought it in 2007 and when the market was here and had to hold on to it for a little longer than I expected. But still, you know, the, it's a much more mobile situation. So, your, your candidate pool and your ability to attract somebody who's looking at relocating into the Oakland County or the greater Detroit metro area, I think you have more to offer in that respect. And it's a smaller community, so you're, excuse me, you're looking at likelihood of younger managers and people who are ready to move up the ladder, so to speak, into a little larger community and take on different assignments.
Matt, do you know how, I know Troy recently went through the process. How long did their process last, do you know?
I think by their charter or their ordinance, they have to have had a replacement within 90 or 120 days. I don't remember which one it was, but.
So, I actually had the opportunity this evening to talk to an acquaintance of mine who's on the city council from Madison Heights. Because when we last met, someone mentioned that they recently replaced their city manager. And she gave me a lot of insight into their process. And it, and I could be misquoting her, but I think that they were able, well, here's, here's what she told me. The, the job search person that they ended up engaging with, when they signed the engagement, that person gave them a 10-week plan, project plan, hit every milestone and they had someone in 10 weeks. And so, that was their process. So, I mean, it's theoretically doable.
And Gov. HR does the same thing. I mean, these are, these, these types of things are, you're right. I mean, hiring somebody that knows what they're doing, has a national, they have a database, they can advertise nationally and stuff like that and draw candidates from across the country as well as nearby.
Yeah, she said that their person got 50 applicants across the country. She whittled them down to seven based on information that she got from the council and job descriptions and that sort of thing and presented seven. And then the council picked, I don't even know how many, and they began the process from there. She did, you know, background checks, personality checks, a variety of tests and that sort of thing. So, it was a pretty, it wasn't a, it wasn't a quick process, it was a very thorough process. But 10 weeks was what they got it done in.
It was thorough but timely.
And efficient.
Yeah, once, once Adrian got into the process, I think it was about three, excuse me, three months from the time they got the advertising going until they completed their process. But like I said, they had two complete sets of interviews. They interviewed five and then they interviewed two.
Anyone else? Okay.
Madam Mayor, I move we adjourn the meeting. No support.
I'm with you, Matt. It seems like something needs to be done still. I don't know what the answer to that is.
I think what we decided last time was that we were going to do a debrief and discussion of the process from today at the council meeting on Tuesday. So, we all have the opportunity to sort of distill our thoughts and then bring it to council meeting on Tuesday and pick the direction from there. Before that motion dies and you make another one.
I mean, number, I'd, number five is discussion of the hiring of an interim city manager. And I'm not really certain what we need to discuss at this point in time regarding that. Because I don't believe that we're ready to make a decision on Mr. Haberman.
There's a motion, there's a motion still on the table.
So, do you have to acknowledge the motion dies? It doesn't get supported, it dies?
It dies.
So, died.
It died.
Postponed.
Yeah, I do think, I do think we just want to discuss next steps. And I don't, I don't know if Mr., if we want to dismiss Mr. Haberman at this time or...
Sorry?
I, I'm just talking to council, I'm not sure.
I'm sorry, I was talking to John.
No, no, that's okay. No, no, I, yes, yeah, I wasn't sure if we wanted to dismiss you or what our next steps should be tonight. And, and we did talk about further discussion on Tuesday at our council meeting, especially with Mr. Eris, Councilmember Eris, being unable to attend this evening due to some...
Personal matters.
Well, I think he, I think he announced a hospital appointment this, today, so.
And he, and he did well. The procedure went well, so.
Good.
I checked in on him today.
Happy for Hillary.
I'm on board with asking, thanking Mr. Haberman first time and, and having a little discussion amongst us.
Yes, thank you very much for coming and...
Oh, no, my pleasure, my pleasure, really.
...reaching out to Mike Earl or you directly and...
And irrespective of, irrespective of your, of your decision, you know, I'd be available as a resource or questions or whatever. I mean, I'm just a phone call away, so don't ever hesitate.
I should have said, did you want to have any parting?
Oh, no, I, I, I want to thank you because you did test me a little bit here. I didn't expect quite, it's been a while since I've been interviewed to that degree. My interview in Adrian was a member of the commission and the mayor over a cup of coffee at a restaurant where we split the difference and where we were getting, meeting. And then, my next meeting with them was being introduced as a new city administrator, interim city administrator. But it was, it was, it was interesting, it was interesting. I hope that I didn't come across as arrogant or anything like that. I'd like to think I'm just confident in what I do and, and I'm very comfortable in the role. I recognize though the, that it is a role, it is a role, and there are a lot of other parties and who I'm, and I, like I said, I'm responsible to the council. I don't want you to feel like when I said, "Well, that depends on what you're looking at." I'm thinking in terms of policy, not specifics. I don't expect you to tell me how to do my job. I expect that you would expect, I know how to do my job. The question is, is what is the very first thing, thing you want me to do? Do you want me to review the downtown and, and, you know, in terms of ordinances or policies? Or you want me to look, what do you want, you know, is, are there issues you feel that need to be addressed by the administrator, at least reviewed or looked into? The other thing you may want to consider is sitting down and doing a strategic plan or at least, at least sit down and try to make a determination on where you want this city to be in a year and where you'd like to see this city in five years. What, what, in other words, what is your vision for this city moving forward? Because those are the goals that you would expect your manager to work toward. And he's got to have, he's got to have an idea of what your vision is. You know, I mean, the bottom line is, when I came to Clausen, I moved up here from Arkansas, I didn't, I had no history in Clausen. And you don't want my vision. My vision comes out of Fayetteville, Arkansas. That may not quite fit in Clausen, Michigan. You all live here. You all understand this community and you understand what, what, you know, what, what people are looking for, you know, as this community moves forward. And so, you know, you're the ones that need to set that direction. Because unless you do that, how are you going to evaluate your new manager as far as his perform, his or her performance? You know, what, what, what do you expect him to accomplish? You know, whatever goals you set out have got to be attainable, first of all, and they have to be measurable before you can evaluate that performance. Otherwise, what you're doing is, it's just opinion. Then you're sitting up here and, "Well, I think he's doing a lousy job." Why? "I just think he's doing a lousy job." Well, that's not the way you really want, and I'm not saying you do that, but, you know, but that's what you end up with unless you have something out there that you've laid out that you can go and look at. And I think one of you said earlier, you know, the milestones, I think, I think you mentioned when they were talking about the, they had milestones laid out and they hit every target. Well, you need to be doing that kind of thing. And there are facilitators that can help you with it. Gov. HR's got one, a process. It may not, and if nothing else comes out of it, you'll learn to work together and start problem-solving together as a team, as a governing body instead of five individuals. That was the one thing I think happened. In fact, I had several of my commissioners in their parting remarks on how the commission started out as seven individuals and became a commission, a body, a governing body, because we worked together. We learned to work together.
I'm going to brag on us because that was my, the best part of being the mayor here is this is an amazing group of people. Truly, out of many voices comes one. Everybody has something to bring to the table and a different skill set and everybody's respectful. So, it's very exciting to be part of a group like that. It's really exciting that the city has a group like this to lead us forward during a difficult time right now. So, if you're here, you'll get to experience that. You just, you did a little bit tonight. Well, thanks again for your time.
Well, thank you.
We'll be in touch.
Thank you for thinking of me. And I'll, I'll go ahead and exit stage left. You can now talk behind my back.
Johnny didn't warn him about us? He didn't warn him about us?
He probably did. That was going to be one of my questions. What did you hear about us?
Well, the next item on the agenda is discussion on the hiring of an interim city manager.
You know, I don't know who here was here on Tuesday. You know, we had five resumes presented to us from various resources and there were seeming deficiencies with many of them. In fact, Mr. Eris was first to speak on the resumes and his recommendation was actually engaging Mr. Haberman as our interim. Mr. Eris, Councilmember Eris, was on city council and served with Mr. Haberman during his time here as city manager. So, I think that, that says something. I, I take that to heart. That being said, you know, Mr. Haberman interacted with members of the community here, city staff here, and so, I've heard a wide variety of opinions as well. You know, he, we probably have more information on him available to us in Clausen than any other applicant could have. Yeah, I, I will say, I do have, I do have concerns about his ability to maybe interact with members of the community or members of staff that he may have had conflict with in the past. And we did talk about that a little bit. And he, he asserted that he would be able to overcome that or not, it wouldn't be an issue for him, right? And I don't know whether or not that would be an issue for...
He just deflected the answer. I mean, we didn't get a concrete answer about how he would overcome those past personality conflicts. And I get, you know, we're all professional, but like I said, having had been in that situation...
professional, but like I said, having had been in that situation myself, going back to a place that you worked at is a weird experience and there are fences to be mended and, and things to overcome, and this just, it just is, right? And I do have a concern about when asked how he would approach that, his answer was, "Well, it's not a thing," because it, it just is. It's just a thing that you need to, you know, when you go back, you need to, when I went back to the place that I had left, like I said, I had a bunch of people I was friends with and I still have lunch with, and there was a bunch of people I couldn't stand, and I had to figure out a way, you know, that, like I said, those were the people that I was like, "Yay, I don't have to talk to them anymore," and, and, and part of my decision about going back is I have to talk to them again and how am I going to, you know, move forward three years later and, and get a working relationship again with them? And, and, and if you don't, if you don't recognize that as a need when you come back to an organization you worked before and have a plan of how you're going to address it, you're going to fall into the same old problems and you're going to have the same strife that you had when you left, and that concerns me.
Yeah, and I, I mean, I, I left the company for five years and I went back to it.
Right?
But I don't know that I had as much angst over, over returning as you have expressed. But, so I mean, I think it is, I think it is possible to overcome some of those things. I'm just not sure. I, I liked his answers on almost every, every other question that we presented him for the most part. I don't know that that's true for everybody, but he said the right words for, to, to answer a lot of our questions, I think.
So to that end though, I think that it, for me, it highlighted that we know we need a city, or interim city manager because the dyke's leaking, but I don't think that we have come up with a clear vision of what that city manager is. And I heard him talking about infrastructure and financial issues, but is that, you know, is that what we, what do we want? We haven't answered the question is what duties and responsibilities? What is our job description for our interim city manager? And, I mean, do we expect someone to come in and take a look at our finances and do an audit, or do we expect someone to, you know, smooth the waters and, and, and get the paperwork running, you know, running again and gets, answers out to the community? I mean, is that just what we're looking for in a city manager? I think that we have to answer that.
See, for me, I, I just want us to get somebody in place that's familiar, that can hit the ground running, get things back on track, and us directing after the crises are over. Because I want to make sure that the emails are being answered, the finances are being done, and so, you know, at least we're kept afloat and don't fall behind. I don't know that, I'm looking for us to stay ahead. I mean, that's a goal, but right now I just want to make sure that we get our temporary city manager some, some help. And I think that this group is more than capable of then creating better direction once that person's in place.
I agree. I guess, in my mindset, we're looking for someone to do more of the micro day-to-day functions, and he talked about skill set and acumen for the macro things. He talked about he can analyze the budget and see if we're on track and do strategic planning and look at infrastructure issues and, and macro things, but our interim person, we need someone to do the day-to-day, to do the micro things, the things that are going to keep the city moving along until we get someone to...
For example?
Like, answering the emails or taking a look at, I mean, I'm sure there's a bunch of processes and letters and things that have not been taken care of because day-to-day stuff that Mike, Mark has, hasn't been able to do because he hasn't been here, the day-to-day stuff. The, the administrative minutia is what we need to keep moving. We don't, it would be remiss of us to have an interim person attack the big stuff because there's not time to get up to speed for the big stuff, and we're going to hire someone who's, you know, their vision is going to be incorporated in doing the infrastructure issues and the financial analysis and that sort of stuff, but we need someone just to keep the ship afloat.
I personally did not love his approach to most of the answers because I felt he didn't answer most of the questions.
I agree.
But that was my approach on it. But after listening to him for a long time, I will say his closing statement was concise and strong, and I felt more confidence in him with that. The one thing I did appreciate that he said was, as a manager, he would let his people lead. You know, he would let his department heads take care of their departments and do that. I mean, that's what we really need someone to do. We need, the president of the United States is not supposed to know everything about Department of Defense and, you know, like the finance and foreign affairs. Like, they're really not supposed to know everything. Like, you have a figurehead and then they're supposed to help motivate and ensure everyone's on track, but they're not supposed to do everything themselves. So I like the idea that he doesn't intend to take on everyone else's task and take care of those things. And I think, having worked in, and I know I say this all the time, but having worked in a municipal situation, most things take care of themselves and most managers take care of their departments, and there's not a lot that's going to fall in, fall off in an executive office. Now, finances is a different story. We need to make sure we have someone in taking, watching the financial ship. It's not Stacy's job to take over the things that Mark was doing financially. I think we need someone that has strong skills that can oversee that, and if in the process, he has free time, because everyone manages differently. I don't know how Mark spent his eight, 10 hours a day here. This person most likely will have different focus and will spend his time differently. If he has time in the process of being here for up to three months, he or whomever has time to look at some of our processes or look at something in the city and give us a fresh set of eyes with knowledge that he brings from someplace else about opportunities that are available somewhere else. We wouldn't be shooting ourselves in the foot to take that information at the same time. So, I, I don't know. But I'm also really not comfortable taking one person as our choice, unless we feel desperate. I don't know how desperate I feel even at this point. I just, I don't think, I know it's important to fill the seat, but we could do ourselves a disservice by filling it with the wrong person, just as well as just not filling it right this moment. And I know we didn't have any better candidates. I will agree that he was the best candidate that we have at this time. I would probably have only considered one other person, and that was the person who's only available two days a week. And I don't think that would be fair to bring someone in two days a week, because we would really get very little out of them, so...
So what's our possibility of getting just another pass at a pool of candidates? I mean, are those the only seven there are in existence, or is there a way to get another group of candidates to take a look at?
I just want to say one thing. I don't know what the history with Mr. Haberman is. I, did he have problems with people? I mean, is that something? Like, you didn't really answer my question, of course. But what's the real history? Anyone here know? You guys have all been here for a long time. I don't know if this is appropriate or not, but I'd like to know that those kind of, if we have something to base it on, you can make a better decision. I feel like if we say yes, we might, I trust Howie implicitly. Howie gave him a shining star, but there's something to something, right? And if it was purely personal and he just needed to move on, then say, "I'm sorry, it was personal. I needed to move on. I didn't hear that today." So that's my, that's my biggest concern with him, because he clearly could do the job. He could fill the seat for three months or however long we need, or three months and two weeks, perhaps not longer than that if we listen to him. But yeah, I, I, I think those concerns are real. That concern is real.
I agree.
I'm sorry, I don't need to speak out of turn, but I noticed that when he was speaking and you were talking about conflicts amongst, like, colleagues, it sounded to me like he said that he could probably name two people, and when he said that, I got the impression that he was referring to within the city. So that has me, I mean, I don't know what his history was here. I, I was living here during part of it, but I don't recall anything, but it just seems to me like maybe he knew something that, or recalled something from his time here.
It sounded like he was saying that two people are still here that have a problem with him before, is what it sounded like he was trying to put out, that, you know, I don't know.
Yeah, unconventional format, but I don't, I don't mind it.
It's still helpful.
I don't mind it.
I still, and I, I hate to go back on it, but I am obsessive. I mean, given that he made that statement and then said, "Oh, I'm professional and I'm not..."
Just repeat, if you might.
So, so the comment from the, the public here was, when he made the statement about, "I could probably name two people that there's conflict with," and so, and, and that causes concern, but in my mind, you can't both identify two people that there's potential conflict with and then also say, "I'm going to come back and not have any conflict with anyone." Those are mutually exclusive approaches to the job, and, and so I know that the, the first statement, "Oh, I'm going to be professional and, and deal with everyone," is the right interview question, but the whole purpose of interviewing is to dig and get them to be honest, and I think the "I can identify two people" is more honest statement than the "I'm going to deal with everyone professionally."
Yeah, I, I know that Mr. Haberman still frequents as a patron in many of the establishments here in Claussen. So, there are business owners that I've spoken to in the past several weeks that says that he still comes into their businesses, and small town, there may be discussions at that level.
And I don't know a lot of business owners, but the couple that I do, I, that I know were familiar with them. I did ask and got glowing, you know, recommendations about him for an interim manager. I just, you know, I go back to, I want to have a choice, and we haven't, don't have a choice yet, you know? I mean, I'd like to get more candidates, I just, especially after today, I really would.
Well, I guess the question would be, do we just post something and say, people have a, oh, how long are you, do you want to post something and wait for things to come back and...
So, hr.gov has no more candidates for us. That's...
I did not reach out to them, but I'm, based on the fact that North Carolina, Seattle, Washington, you know, Coldwater, there's probably not some other candidates close by that we will not incur travel and lodging expenses for. Come back up to the microphone, just, please.
Again, is this working?
Yes.
Yes.
George Georges, 322 Baumann, South End. The last meeting, okay, that you had, okay, you specifically said what you just repeated. Okay, you don't want to spend the money to bring somebody in, okay? You don't want to have that living allowance, okay? What you have with Mr. Haberman, okay, he's, he's here, okay? Some of the things that he said, okay, that I liked, okay, is the financial analysis, okay? In other words, he's going to look at the numbers, all right? Now, keep in mind, he's only going to be here four months. It's not like you're hiring him for five years, all right? So, granted, there may be a couple of people here that may not like him, but that's not the reason you're hiring him. You're hiring him as a temporary city manager to handle what you need done right now, okay? And that's, that's the problem we have. We don't have anybody, okay? And as you pointed out, North Carolina, Washington, there's just nobody out there right now on a temporary basis, okay? And I think you can also use him to give you the guidance to look for the guy that's going to replace him, okay, because he's got the knowledge. When you start looking at his credentials, okay, they're impressive on that. So I think, all right, that you seriously have to consider what he can offer to us, okay? Not what his problems with people are. We're not looking to hire him to be a nice guy. We're looking to hire him as a city manager. And I'm a manager, okay? I have people that work for me. They're not my friends, okay? Because soon as I start friending them, I've got a problem, okay? Because what I have to do is I have to make a decision when, when I tell them what they have to do or what has to be accomplished, all right? And you're doing the same thing here. So I think you have a candidate here that can work with his city because he knows it, all right? And if it's two people, you know, I think we can live with that. So, and, he said he has, what, until March? The end of March?
Middle of March.
Middle of March. Well, I think you can kind of stretch a couple of days, because Michigan weather, they're not going to be leaving that soon, because there's going to be snow on the ground.
We'll get a snowstorm. We'll get a snowstorm.
So, you know, if, if I was sitting in your chair, okay, right now I think I'd be considered to vote to get him here so you can get him started, okay? Because the concern that the citizens have, if you listened to some of the people last time, was, "Well, you guys aren't prepared. Okay, you went and did something and you have no plan." Well, show them you got a plan, okay? Take the gentleman, because he's there on there.
Thank you, Mr. Georges.
Thank you.
Joan Horton, 590 East Elmwood. I just have a couple of questions. You brought a man in here, I worked with Rich before, I had no problem with him, but you brought a man in here, a single candidate, and now you interview him and you're going to say, "Thank you, but we like the, oh, other guy who's not here better." It seems like there would be a better way to do the process. The other thing that I have a question about is, I heard you say, "We want somebody to come in who can answer emails, take care of letters, and do the minutia." But you've also said, "We like the fact that Rich said, 'I want somebody who,' I, I am somebody who lets department heads take care of their departments." What's the, so we've got, we agree, or it sounds like, we've got some good department, people in charge of departments who are doing their job, but we want somebody to handle minutia, which I, I can't, I don't, I don't understand. What's the, and what's the budget for this person who's going to handle emails and letters and answer the telephone and take care of minutia and make sure department heads are doing exactly what they're supposed to be doing? What's the budget for this person? Who's, who's taking care of the budget amendments that have to be done very soon? And what is the end budget? What are we paying this person? I saw in Adrian, they paid Rich $70 an hour, $105 for anything over 40 hours a week, lodging, which I guess he won't need here, but I'm guessing you're going to be paying that for somebody else too. So, is, that seems like a lot of money. Who's looking at the finances to say, what, where's this pack, where's this pack of money coming from that we're paying for? Don't we need a finance person? Then figure out the city manager who's going to be the overview over all those departments? It's my opinion, as a citizen, just seems to make sense that we need to know the finances and how much we're going to pay this person before we go into interviews to figure out who it's going to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, if, and I, I wish I had the number in front of it. I actually forgot my iPad. My, this is the first time I've come to a city meeting without my iPad. But just doing the quick math, $70 an hour, which I, I think, I think is what Gov HR, is that right? It's, yeah, so $2,800 a week times 12 weeks is 30, 33 grand, somewhere in that, that range for 12 weeks. You know, that's...
Is that $70 an hour inclusive of all fees, or does Gov HR charge us on top of that that's inclusive?
They charge a four, they charge 40%.
Of his 70?
Of his 70. I can't, I don't have the...
That seems right. I'm sorry, I'm...
Yeah, no, I, I thought that's what I read. I just wanted to clarify it.
Now, Gov HR said, depending on who we selected, it, it was kind of a, a range that they gave. So, I had not buttoned that down and saying, you know, "Send us a contract and let's see where we're at with the contract," and certainly I could do that tomorrow and get that to council, make it available online.
And I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but city hall, I mean, city employees work how many hours a week?
32.
36.
36, 36.
36, sorry.
And that's, frankly, that rate is not, not that much more than we pay for the role of city manager slash finance director, I think, frankly.
Correct. It wasn't.
Michael Frank, 1333 North Selfridge. Mentioned about interim people. Mr. Haberman mentioned his professional organization, MME.
MML.
On their website, they have a subpage just for interim managers, and they have a list of five or six people listed right now on their, their site, so.
Michigan Municipal League?
Yeah.
Yes, we've already, I looked at that site. No, gentleman, that's available two days a week is from there. He's local. Everybody else is a distance and have to pay the travel.
Because you'd been mentioning GovHR and.
Yes.
Just another potential resource.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
So where are we?
I don't think we can make a decision without Howie. I mean, or do you want to make a decision tonight?
What I would like to do is reach out to the GovHR site and have them prepare a contract for us to review and see what the numbers actually are. And that, and that be part of the council packet on Tuesday and then plan on making a decision on Tuesday with that information.
Yeah, that's probably something we, we should have had tonight. The, so if that's, what else are we missing then? I mean, do we, do we need to have other options? Should we be looking for other options in case the Tuesday vote doesn't, doesn't.
Pan out.
Appoint Mr. Haberman? Is there, do we post something? And I'm sorry, I don't have the answer right now.
I don't know, but, you know, like, I don't think that we post it, like, on Career Builder or anything like that, but I, to see if there's other places to get interim candidates. And there has to be, we can look at the different RFPs or, you know, the placement places that surrounding cities have used for their search and see if any of them provide contract services as well. I mean, I did a quick Google search of contract municipal organizations and stuff came up. I may or may not have been at work, so I had other stuff to do, but, I mean, there's, there's got to be other places. And.
I think those are the two largest and the most respected in the area. Both equally, we're going to incur costs.
And I get that contracts are hard, contract positions are hard to fill because they're just hard to fill. There's not, you know, you've got to have someone who's retired or whatever, like I said the other day, that wants to work a contract position.
And part of it's from the resources, somebody that's looking to be an interim city manager is going to post their stuff on the Michigan Municipal League website because it's just, all they do is post. There's no charge, there's, they just post them. So people that are interested in doing that, that's where they're going to go.
And that's where we're going to look. That's where municipalities are going to look first.
Mm-hmm.
And we're a small community. I think that's going to be a little bit to our detriment. People are going to want to go somewhere larger if you're in the field, if you've been in the field for a while, because the pay is greater and the responsibility is different as well. So if you're looking and you're existing, there's some, you might not even consider Clausen for that reason.
I mean, my, my hope, I mean, despite my concerns and as was mentioned, we could bring in somebody fresh and neutral from the outside that we've never experienced before and week one could have conflicts with one or more people. My hope is that we'll be able to, my hope is that we'll be able to appoint Mr. Haberman on Tuesday. That's, you know, we talk about finances. He, he's done budgets 50% of the time as a city, of his time as a city manager has been without finance director. So, I mean, he, he has, that's in his wheelhouse or at least his, his background, so. But we, we might want to postpone that until Tuesday.
I'm just wondering if anyone else other than me would feel kind of like we're settling with Mr. Haberman? Not that it might necessarily not be a bad choice, but because he is our best option, our cheapest option? Because he's our cheapest option realistically, because we're not paying outside other things for other people.
I'm looking at it, because it's interim. It's an interim position that can quickly fit in that spot. And I don't think it will be detrimental to have him here for that period of time. I think he certainly, it was clear to him on what type of council he's walking into. And he didn't run away. That was, that was encouraging. But I think he, he checks the boxes for me. Is it a perfect situation? No, but I'm not looking for him to be the perfect fit. I'm just looking for somebody short-term to get us through. He has the financial background, he's available, he's the cheapest, you know, he knows our staff. And so he, there's a lot of things for me that say, it'll, it's kind of good enough for me. I hate to say that because I mean, I understand the settling.
That's what it feels like, though. That's exactly what it feels like, and I.
But at the same time, I'm thinking, well, where, I mean, I guess we could start the process and start looking, but again, I go back to, if people are willing to do that, they're on the MML website. And I've talked to the MML people and they have said from an interim standpoint, pickings are slim, was their words. And so to then do a search on our own, to then put this off, you know, even two weeks.
Yeah, I don't want to wait a long time either.
That's more concerning to me than Mr. Haberman filling a spot for 12 weeks.
Hi, Stephanie Georges, 38, West Tacoma Street. Just to reiterate what Mr. Frank was saying was that you keep mentioning the MML, but there's also MME, which is Michigan Municipal Executives. And they do have some people listed on their website. I don't know who the original applicants were, so I don't know if any of them are duplicates, but it's just another resource that the council could look at possibly. You know, maybe they have the same people, maybe they have different people. And again, I think that the key thing that you need to keep in mind is this is an interim position, and it's to get us to a point where you guys can comfortably spend the time looking for a full-time candidate that will serve the city in what we want long-term. That's all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Is that the site you looked at before?
No, I did not. I'm sorry. I'm stand corrected. I'm terribly sorry.
As an example, there's a gentleman who is a former assistant city manager and director of finance for Troy.
Oh, Mr. Lamorado. We've talked to him. He's the gentleman that's only available two days a week.
His resume says he's available more than that.
Yeah.
No. Unfortunately.
Good.
Yes, he was, he is an, was an excellent candidate, unfortunately. And I believe his words to me were up to two days a week.
I wish I could do that.
Well, any further discussion or my responsibility will be to reach out to the HR.gov site and have them provide a formal quote slash contract. I'll get it to Victoria so she can include it in our Thursday, or the packet that will be for Tuesday night's meeting and go from there.
I do want to, I do want to thank the public as well for their input today. I appreciate it very much. Madam Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Moffett?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Yes.
Mayor Woolley?
Yes.
Councilmember Milan?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Next time y'all can sit up front, too. Step back.
She brought cookies. Maybe we need to bring cookies up here officially.